And we are lined. All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to Oxford Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, September the 11th. Before we begin, just want to remind people that the transfer station is open Thursdays from 11 to 7:00. Those hours will remain until the end of September. You might want to go early this week because we hit Hurricane Lee. Might not be able to get there on Saturday. So those hours are staying 11 to 7:00 for the month of September. Okay? I'll call this meeting to order. Before we approve the agenda, I want to point out that the time showing on the agenda is 6:20 PM. It should be 6:00 PM. Okay? I've got a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second or?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay. You've got to package your packaged minutes from last meeting. Any errors or omissions? Nothing? They're them approved. We'll start off with Section 4, Reports of Town Departments, Public Works Report. Nick Cuddy presenting.
Thank you. Public Works completed the following tasks throughout the couple of months. So first thing we did was spanned the crosswalk through town and all of the parking lots. We installed new signs throughout town, the children playing, littering, et cetera. We also applied calcium on the trail to help with the dust complaints. And a water break on Crescent Avenue. We also completed our first aid course and a water break on Foundry Street. And that was the 17th water break of the year today.
Anybody have any questions for Nick? How many water breaks did we used to have a year, you know?
I believe last year was 28.
Okay. Hopefully, we don't break that record.
I have a question, Worsha.
Go ahead.
Do you have the timeline where you're going to fix the water line over the roof?
We are waiting to hear back from Amherst. So Amherst would like to come down and freeze the two-inch line so we can put a valve in to have the water shut off completely in order to put a valve, then about 150 feet of pipe into the services.
And I have another question.
Yep.
The two trees, dangerous trees that reported on Handle Street, have you checked them again?
Handle Street, is that one by like one or two Rika and?
Turn up to the, turn up to the Foundry.
Yep, yep. So both of them are on list. There's two of the bad ones there. One was removed last year.
Somebody should, in a case like that, I think somebody should respond to the owner so they know what's going on. Those trees are first reported in September 2022. He's got an email that was sent to the town office and nobody ever talked to him. So I think that perhaps some, you know, in a case like that, I think someone should go see him and say, we blocked that and we're going to try to get them caught.
Good, good idea.
Because a branch came off the tree here not too long ago and Cuddy took a mash off his side of the stone. In a case like that, once it's recorded, the town is liable.
And there is a timeline, like if you reach out to North Scotia Power, if they're number one, move it. There's five power lines they do take, but it will offer to be done. But as far as us, I'm sure we can go see them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Nick? Okay, Nick.
Thank you, Worsha.
We'll call on the fire department report. We've got Fire Chief Bruce and Deputy Chief Kyle reporting.
Thank you. First thing I'd like to mention, members of the Oxford Fire Department want to acknowledge that it's been 22 years since the horrific events of September 11th in the United States. So members responded to 96 calls since January 1st to the end of August. Yes. 11 in June, 19 in July, 10 in August. 12 medical, those, these include 12 medical-related calls, six motor vehicle collisions, four fire alarms, two woods fires, four vehicle fires, nine weekly calls to assist our neighboring departments, two public assistance calls where we assisted the RCMP with things, and one legal burn. I'm pleased to report also that we've got two more new members that have just signed up and already have signed up for Level 1 training, so Kyle's going to touch on that in a second. And unfortunately, Donald Patterson has moved away from our district, so he's no longer with the fire department, but we want to, we want to thank him for his service over the years.
There are three new members taking Level 1 this year in Palm Beach. It's going to be a lot of fun there. We have him this April, probably second weekend for a few months. So we're pretty pleased to have him attend that.
That's quite a commitment, so. Kyle, I've also been working a lot on this research and trying to find a good use firetruck as we've mentioned here before. A lot of time in well minute and just trying to find the right truck to suit our needs and that will also fit in our fire station. So that's a bit of a, that's something we're working on. So, but we also want to thank Mayor and Council for your support with all of this. So it's very appreciated, so. Thank you.
Oh, is it the back? You're doing that?
Yeah, I just, I just remember some of that, yes.
Oh, okay.
I see it.
Anybody have any questions for our chief or deputy? On behalf of Town Council, I want to thank you guys for what you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Carry on. Good work. Okay. Next up is Municipal Physical Activity Leader's Report. Jimmy is not able to give you here. I'm hearing the floor over to Councilor McNutt.
Yep, Jimmy sends his regard. And I, to be honest, don't know all of this because I'm just kind of getting it just like everybody else, but we'll go through what I do know. The summer students that we had this year had a few responsibilities, I guess, helping with summer camps. She created a couple of her own programs as well. She helped out with the co-ed softball, helped with the flower beds, telephones, painting them, yeah, some miscellaneous jobs. We had quite a full summer program list for the kids this year. Unfortunately, the rain didn't help us this year. Few of them had to be canceled. Summer soccer was excellent this year. They had a huge registration list and that ran from July 4th to August 29th. There was a local singer, I guess, Kevin Dakin concert August 31st and over 60 people attended that. The walking group is in full swing, so if anybody's interested, they do the zeeple on Wednesdays at 6:00 PM. It is a very gentle walk and it's usually typically 30 minutes. I guess also the physical activity group did the first aid course. And then there's a couple of other things that I'm just going to let Jimmy discuss next month here. And that's it for recreation. I guess I can tell people that we're just in the, literally today started planning the Christmas parade and it's the last Friday of November, so that's November 24th. And it'll be basically the same as every other year, but we've lots of information to go.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions that personal mayor may not be able to answer? You have anything to answer that, or no?
No.
No, okay, good. Okay. Next up, Administration Department reports. Linda Colony presenting.
Okay, thank you, Worsha. So through the months, June, July, and August, there were many tax certificates given out, tax billings, water billings, senior rebate information during the month of July and August, and there's still a few more trickling in that way. The end of September, we're looking back into our tax out process. Right now, we're currently starting our water disconnection process, statement of reminders of two outstanding accounts went out today in the mail, answering questions to auditors, slightly, dangers and unsightly have been worked on as well. And we also did a big upgrade to our Sage accounting. We did a much-needed security thing, so that was updated just recently, the end of August. And that's what I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for that? No? Okay, we'll just keep on moving then. Next, we'll call on Ruth Berman, our accountant, for the financial reporting.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I did have to report around the 1st of September. So it goes in, most things that are posted are up to the middle of August, which is about 40% of the year. So the report that you see has, the first column is what we budgeted for the year, and the second column is how much we have posted to date and that would be up to the middle of August. And the third column is the percentage that we've used up or we have posted, say, up to date. So it just gives you an idea where we're standing right now. The revenues, the first page, I did three different analysis, one on our general operating, one on our water operating, and one on our capital budget. So for the general operating budget, there it is there. So you can see that first column is what we budgeted and the second column is. I believe the button.
One more column to the left, Sam?
Sure.
Yeah, it's coming. It's just, it's, I can. All guys here. There we are.
Is the town seat machine?
Sure. They do. Yes, sorry, it's too nice. Making it so everybody on Facebook land can see us as well as.
Okay. A lot of our revenues are already posted because we've put out both the interim and mine bill. So you'll notice a lot of those are at 100%. And that's just because we have put a, that's not saying we collected 100%. That's just the, you know, that should be revenue through the tax bills we put out. So that's tax revenue and where are we at in that page?
Where do you want us to be?
So own source revenue and?
We're on expenditure for.
Oh, you're on expenditure. You should go up to the top where that started.
Okay, let me just give you a little direction and I'll make you know where. Nevermind.
Okay. So is that the general operating?
Yes.
Okay, so now you can go down because that's basically 100%, which I was talking about. Those are the bills that we put out. There's a couple of things there. That's the one-year payment from the government. They're 100%. So you notice our own source revenue though with the special program registrations, that's the recreation. And so we did have some good funds rolling through recreation programs. And of course, it's summertime, so you get most of your revenue in the summertime there. So I think we're right on board with that one. The tax certificates, I put that in yellow too because we are doing better than we got with tax certificates so far, so.
Shouldn't tax certificates, that's for D transfer tax?
Yeah, well, not for, that's just for the certificates. Now, the D transfer tax is there too in another line and it is also increased. We just didn't have August in at the time, so it wouldn't have been quite a comparable amount, but it's, it's doing well as well. So when you go to the total revenue, which is down a little bit, you notice we're at 88%. And that's, I think we're, yeah, 88%. So that's, we have the money in the bank now, but we have to make that last for the rest of the year. So basically, we have another, you know, 22% we have to bring in with other funding that we have, like Phillips and things that come in monthly instead of all at once. So then we get into our expenses and again, I'm looking at the 40%. If you're anywhere between 30 and 50%, you're probably right on par with stuff because some things are posted, some things haven't. So it's, you know, you have to go around about calculation on these things. The thing that increased a lot more than I thought, insurance went up 17% this year across the board. It did drive the expenses up further than I thought. I did allow for a 7% increase, but not a 17% increase. So that will feel it at the bottom line probably by the end of the year. But overall, when you look at the general government right now, we're at 35%, so that's pretty good. So our labor costs are staying in tow with the administration. The next one is Protective Services. Leasing is right where, I mean, those, those bills just get paid quarterly as they've been agreed on at the first of the year, so it shouldn't be surprising. Fire, they seem to be holding their own with the budget. They look like they're high at 64%, but there is one B item in there that's a one-year charge, which is a public fire protection charge. And so that's at 100%. It's a, you pay it right in September, so, you know, they're, if you look at all the other percentages, they're doing well and there are other, the other lines to do with the fire department, so. Then of course, the sewer and the taxes are going to be at 100% because the bills have gone out. And then the emergency management, we're good there at 41%. And other protective services, we're at 39% right now, so we're good there. The next one is Transportation Services. And if you look at the total bottom, we are at 31%, so we're holding our own there as well. There's, a lot of the street maintenance has not been done yet, so that will drive that up once we get the auditors looked after. That, that should change up, but the other, the other ones are maintaining their own. I mean, the truck and the van are more spent, but then the loader and the bowless on the maintenance. So it works out as long as the end number is, is still hanging around 40%. I mean, winter is coming, so you can't predict what's going to happen in the winter either, but hopefully we, that's new equipment now and we won't have as many problems with maintenance and things that we did last year. If anybody has any questions, go through, just like, you know. Environmental Health Services, that's, that's right on board with the 31% as well. And again, the power, with all these, the power is going to be more in the winter and whatnot. So 31 is low, you might think is low, but once winter comes and you have higher power bills, that shoots up there, so. 31 is pretty good for this time of year though. And Public Health and the Environmental Development, we're at 48% for a total for that, and that's like the medical center and planning with the town of Amherst. And we do a one-shot bill with them, so again, that's at 93% there. And, but that's staying not too bad at 48%. Okay, the recreational cultural, the arena, the expenditures on that is only 25%. And again, that's more of a winter expense, so that will get up even though it's not only at, it's only, it's not near 40% yet. Fields and libraries, that's your Christmas lights, your tennis courts, skateboard park, trails, ball and soccer fields, all that stuff. Library expense, we're at 48% there. There was one driving factor there, the trails. We did have an extra expenditures in the operating this year because the 8,000 we agreed to give the trails in the capital budget, we could only spend 4,000 of that on capital projects. They didn't have any more than 4,000 for capital, so they had to come out of operating. So, because you can't spend gas tax money on everything but capital projects. So that was, we'll have to watch for that for another year. Theater, that's on par at 36%. And again, you know, your gas, your gas and your, your electricity will go up come wintertime, so even though it's not a 40, it's not because we're, we're low, it's just the time of year. Recreation, the, we're at 30% there, just doing very well with this spending in the Recreation Department, so. And we stayed on course as to what we planned on spending with the summer students and, there's a few things that haven't posted in there yet, so, for wages and whatnot, but it's, it's going to look good. And the fiscal services, I put in all as 100 because I know what they're going to be coming in all of us. They're just, your, all your ventures that will be coming out in November. So, you know, although they're not actually posted, I did fill them in because that's just what it's going to be. The district school board, we paid them monthly, so that's why it's at 42%, but in the year it will be at 100. Those, those numbers there were assured that they're going to stay the same, you know, they are. So basically, I feel like we're pretty much on target with our general operating budget. If you don't get any big surprises, I think we should be good. The water, the revenues, with water, it's a little different. We have four bills go up and only two have gone, one has gone in so far and been paid for this year because the next one has went in September and December and March. So the revenues are, are not 100%. They're actually showing at 18%, which is probably right on par for what, I would like it more up around 25%, but hopefully, once we get all these new meters attached and the consumption is right properly, that, that our mixed bills will do a little more catch up. The total revenue though shows at 37%. There's, we have that public fire protection fee in there at 100%. It's sort of, it's truce the numbers. So, the expense for water, the source and pumping is at 26% right now. Treatment, the insurance went up quite a bit in, in the water side with wells and whatnot. So anyway, we're at 52% there for the power, the treatment total. And transmission and distribution, that's your giving the water to the customers. It's at 34%, so we're staying on par with that one. The administration costs within water, they, they're pretty much a standard that I figure before I make up the budget and move the money over from general operating, so that's at 32%. We're, we're doing okay there. And again, the other part is all your ventures, your depreciation, your taxes, all that stuff that's, you know, non-negotiable. And so basically, our expenses are at 55% and we're showing a loss, but that's normal for this time of year for water. Once we get another couple of water bills out, we'll, we'll do that tomorrow. So, and then the last one is the capital budget. And I've never reviewed this that much on, on these meetings before, but I felt it's kind of important to kind of understand the whole, because we, we did have quite a few capital projects on the go this year and a few things have changed. We did, let me see, actually, no. For the budgeted, the sidewalks, we're seeing about patchwork being done. We may have to take some of the sidewalks and put into the patchwork for the roads because asphalt has gone really crazy price. So we're still looking at that, but we still plan to get, get it done before the snow flies. And the truck, we bought the truck and stayed right on course with that, actually a little lower than, than what we thought. The 28,000 and 28,000 of it went into water as well. So we split the truck cost between water and, and general. And so, I don't know if you can tell that from there or not. Let me get a little further in the blue area. So you see the other 28,000s over in this corner here. I don't know if you can see it or not. So, see up above there? So the truck says 56,000 and decided, well, we actually spent 28,000. Well, no, we spent 28 times two, half of it's coming out of our general reserve and half that's come out of the water capital reserve. And the same with the backhoe, because we use the backhoe for so many water breaks, we decided to split it between the general reserve and the water reserve. And we'll see where we actually get those now when posted. Waste water pump, we are going to need at least that much in there for that. We had an unexpected culvert for sewer happen. That's going to cost $40,000. That's going to have to come out of the capital reserve. So that's sort of an unexpected expense we weren't planning for, for sure. We still plan on, if we can, do the Foundry Street water main replacement. We're still waiting to see if some government funding will come about, but to this stage, it does not. So if it's not done this year, we'd be on the spring, the list for spring for next year. So I'm still hopeful that something comes through there for that. So, oh yes, we also had an unexpected expense in well number four, a replacement there for 46,000. That's going to have to come out of the water capital. So our reserves are on 86,000, a little lower than what we expected at, at budget time as, as unexpected.
I have a question. That culvert, the $38,000 culvert, did we hear in the back of the province?
Yeah, we're still in process between the insurance and, and the application.
Okay.
Yeah, we might be able to. We might be able to cook some. So if we can get a grant, that's wonderful, but we don't, something happened.
There was a disaster relief when they set up, where floods down around Halifax and whatnot. Well, we had ours two weeks before, like the culvert had. So we still got $38,000 for it. So we went to the province, so we had our own flood, but we were just ahead of you covered, but we have no word back.
If I may, number four, the number four well, is that the way to the bike all that year replaced? Is that the, the well and all of the wire here? Yes, okay.
Okay, I'll have questions for Ruth then. So we're gonna, we're okay though? In your books?
Yeah, we're, we're still okay. You know, we might be on expected costs, but that happens. And we did have enough in there that it's going to be okay.
We'll hope that the province becomes a disaster relief. Okay, that's, no questions? That's all the reports we need? Have motion, accept those? Have a motion to accept those reports?
So moved.
Will I, Councilor Jones, signed by, or Deputy Mayor McDonald, if you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Next up, Reports of Committees and Boards. Linda Colony presenting all reports. Florence Jones.
All right, so starting with 5.1, and it also runs into 5.2 as well, Cumberland Public Libraries Report. So these reports, the reports itself, the monthly report she submits, she talks about the April 2022 saw the launch of Same Page. Same Page is a partnership of eight regional libraries across North Scotia working together to improve the library experience. So other that, from Circulation by Location, reviewing the pie chart that's on the back of the report. It shows Oxford at 10,456 circulation. So I went to compare it to another town similar to our size, Carsborough, was 11,306. So this note, this circulation's 2022-23. And Public Watch just received their new library, so 22-23, they were at 7,743. Be interesting to see what that number turns into next year's report, so. They're going to have their next board, board meeting coming up in September. So also, you'll notice on the website, I didn't print most, it is a lot of paper, but it's there for anyone. There's the annual report as well as the financials for the libraries. And that, let's see here, it talks about their messages, it talks about their year in review, talks about the new library of Public Watch, different programs that they had, and successes, and their budget. And so it talks about that. And then in the financials, it shows the breakdown of all the different municipalities. So you'll see Oxford's contribution as well as the county of Cumberland and Amherst and. So you'll see Oxford's contribution as well as the county of Cumberland and Amherst and the province. So we're the three sources of revenues for, for the library, um, in our Cumberland area. So anyways, that's the, uh, report from Cumberland Public Libraries. Unless, uh, Councilor Black has anything to add.
No, no, maybe after our meeting, but.
Mm-hmm. Shall we just continue with your reports?
Carry on.
Okay. Uh, so we also received a financial update from the regional chairs. This is in the, uh, council package as well. This is just a for your information. It talks about third year in review with revenues, their financial statements, um, the year in review of expenses, um, payable. And, uh, so it's just really for, for your information for anyone that's interested. And then we're ready for item number six.
Okay, so we need a motion for those reports? Let's all move. Websecener?
Second.
Hold the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carry. Items of discussion and correspondence. We'll start with, uh, six point one, uh, customer service request, two residents.
Two residents, so I have two completely different, um, residents. Uh, complaining of the same thing in the same area roughly. Uh, and it happened in June, the end of June. Um, mind you, both of these reports did go to the RCMP for investigation. But, uh, what was going on is, uh, roaming teenagers, uh, from ten P M. to one A M. Around town knocking on front doors and pounding on windows and throwing rocks. Uh, they estimate between twelve and fifteen and they dressed in black.
Mm-hmm.
Um, anyways, they would like it to brought up at a council meeting to possibly talk about, uh, curfews. Um, and then the same, uh, same scenario with a completely different person, different location. They are talking about Henderson Street, Holden Street, Jackson Street. Um, and again, stressing the council to make note. And so I brought together the noise by law and it does, you know, state about, uh, no person shall engage in any activity which is likely to generate noise or sound that unreasonably disturbs the peace and tranquility of a neighborhood for the purpose of this section, evidence that one neighbor is unreasonably disturbed by the noise. Um, evidence that the neighbor is unreasonably disturbed by that noise. So they fall under the noise by law, but we don't have a curfew by law. And, but we do have a time, um, like, uh, it's prohibited Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, before seven, or anytime after nine-thirty. And so we do talk about it in the noise by law, but it's up to council to see if they want to look into further or wait where those were in June, if more situations come in.
Did those individuals call the RCMP?
Uh, they notified the RCMP, plus I sent the reports that they sent us out to the RCMP. And we talked about it, the police advisory board too, they'll go for that meeting as well.
That's the ongoing event.
Still in that area.
Saturday night, we did it at one fifteen.
So it's still going on?
Not as fast as I used to be.
Somebody's kid is lucky. So.
I don't see that there's anything that we can do, I mean.
Well, first of all, you, you could, you put a curfew and you'd have, have someone who enforces it.
Right. It would still be the RCMP who would then be called because that law was broken. They would just break two laws as opposed to one, and I, I'm horrified.
Maybe we can try to raise public awareness. If parents got, I assume it's kids doing it.
They estimate under, under fifteen and under, so.
So, uh, maybe start something, public awareness to educate the parents to let them know where are your kids and what are they doing? Count of the days where a size ten boot sort of solved that, but we've progressed instead.
All right, sounds good.
Good.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, technology devices policy. So we have a policy, uh, that we need to put in play. It was requested by the auditors, uh, to have this in play. And it's our technology devices policy. And I have Stan here to answer any questions because he's our technology person. Just to say, so it's not me. Uh, the town of Oxford recognizes the role technology plays in providing municipal services to allow staff to work in an environment where learning and poor decision-making and innovation is key. The town of Oxford provides devices to some of its staff. Devices can be devices, notebooks, tablets and/or cell phones. The purpose of this policy is to outline the acceptable use and care of these devices and the employee's role in ensuring municipal assets, information and network systems are protected. So we did send this out on Friday and posted, uh, on the website. So we just want to note a couple of changes. Um, since that was printed, um, in appendix A, um, it's include the newly updated Sage Fifty Pro accounting software, which was our, our updating our accounting. Uh, so that was done. And also we removed Windows ten, um, as a bullet item. But we'd like to bring this to council meeting on the twenty-fifth, uh, for possible approval of this policy. So I just wanted to make notes here and if anybody has any questions or before the twenty-fifth council meeting.
Okay, anybody have any questions, technical or otherwise? We're in a variable bunch.
Yes.
Okay, next up, uh, Mayor Cogan from Amherst and Mayor Scott from the county and I had a sit-down chat. Um, basically it was, we used to share services with the, the landfill. And, uh, Mayor Cogan, Mayor Scott would like to see that sort of cooperation continue. And they would like to see us have a joint council meeting once a year in a different location, each community on a rotating basis. And basically it would be social as well as any business that would be pertinent to areas. You know, anything that we would have a share of interest in. So, uh, it was a good meeting and I thought that would be a good idea. And we would sort of get an idea of what, uh, the other councils are dealing with. So, yeah, it was a, I'd say. So there will be a time and a date announced for a joint council meeting of Amherst, Oxford and the county or municipality of Cumberland. And if we have any issues or anything we want to bring to it, that would be the ideal time. Any questions? Good. Okay, next up, uh, correspondence from Lucas Tree, Re, Arbor Day and Councilor McNutt.
I'll, I'll mention it in case you have any touch up, uh, I didn't give her the information.
Oh, you did give her any? Sorry.
So, no, that's okay. Lucas Tree approached Councilor McNutt, um, and, uh, we were talking with the fellow councillors here. And, uh, it was asked, uh, they'd like to know if the town of Oxford would like to plant a tree on September twenty-first in Arbor Day, uh, for their industry. So council was talking and they are all very supportive about the idea. I'm not sure if they picked a tree or anything.
No, I guess that was just next question. I just looked and I didn't even respond to him, um, because I was kind of wondering what, where we wanted it or what.
Type of trees, so we could probably continue discussion on.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, so they also want to know if we would like to take part in Arbor Day. So I don't know if it's ceremonial type thing or anything, but Arbor Day is coming up. September twenty-first is the day for Arbor Day.
What day is that? What day is it?
See, that is a Thursday.
Okay. Good.
So something to follow up on.
Okay.
We have to notify them and tell them we want to go with the program.
Right, right now.
They'll know.
Yeah, it's been done as of speak. Okay, uh, nothing else on Lucas Tree, Arbor Day. Let's go to six point five, Thirteen Ways Incorporated, Linda.
Okay, thank you, worship. So Thirteen Ways Incorporated, uh, this was brought to us by a citizen here in Oxford and, uh, she would like to bring forward for council to consider in hiring Thirteen Ways Incorporated. Uh, so what this is, uh, so it's like an introduction. I'm just going to read a little bit from the correspondence here. The town of Oxford is facing a critical juncture as it struggles to revive its once vibrant community. To catalyze its rejuvenation, Oxford should strongly consider partnering with Thirteen Ways Incorporated, a re-owned company, that's sorry, community development firm with a proven track record and an array of comprehensive services. Thirteen Ways Incorporated can offer tailored solutions that align with Oxford's unique needs and vision. And the strategic collaboration has the potential to yield substantial returns on investment and pave the way for Oxford's resurgence. So there's various services that they offer. Uh, it's a community assessment, a community engagement, strategic direction, priority-based budget support, uh, branding and culture, communication and marketing plan. And the return on investment by engaging with Thirteen Ways um, could see something like economic revival, increased property values, business growth, tourism and reputation and long-term sustainability. Um, so with that, there's conclusion. Oxford's path to revival requires a comprehensive multi, multi-facet approach that addresses various challenges. Thirteen Ways Incorporated's expertise, experience and wide range of services make them ideal partner for guiding Oxford towards a thriving future. Uh, so by investing in Thirteen Ways, Oxford can anticipate not only a transformation of its community, but also a powerful return on investment that will shape its success for years to come. So with that being said, uh, usually this would come to council and then council will give direction for staff into investigating further. We could look into what the costs are, what, uh, how the setup would be, whatever council would like to do. Um, they recommend to, uh, maybe begin with a chat with the council. We could invite them in to do a presentation if you want and see what they're all about. Um, they recommend a Zoom chat. And I have biographies, those are attached inside the council package as well testimonials of the program. So I just brought this here to bring out to council for consideration, discussion, or we could talk about it again at council meeting, whatever.
Questions, anybody?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
When we do some discovery on costs?
Mm-hmm.
What, what they're actually expecting, uh, from us? And what their projection is to Oxford?
Mm-hmm.
So it would be a lot easier to be, uh, have discovery, instead of saying, this is what Thirteen Ways do. What are they going to do for us? And how much is it going to cost us? Would probably be the bottom mark.
I'd also wonder if, um, there's some of what we've already had planned, not been repetitive.
Yes, we have the strategic, uh, planning we've done as well, but just, you know, you're paying.
Overlapping.
Yes.
Overlapping services.
Yeah.
Well, what's the opinion on inviting them in for a Zoom to see what they're offering?
Anything to bring?
Sure.
Okay. Uh.
If you do a future count?
Yes, I'm going to say, yeah, let's not send it up to the next council meeting.
I agree with Councilor McDonald to see what they offer, what might be of any good to us and what a possible fee would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Next up, email from Catherine Mundell, human resources coordinator for Oxford Frozen Boots and Sidewalks and Reflective Signage, Linda.
Thank you. So, uh, we received an email, um, from, uh, Ms. Mundell. She wanted to inquire on how to get some crosswalks or reflective signage to put up within the town. So we actually have ordered some reflective signage, uh, that's been ordered to put up in that area. So that's, we're just waiting for that to come in. Uh, they do have several homes located on the other side of the highway, uh, with many of the employees walking to work. As right now, the days are getting shorter, so it is darker and it's making it riskier. They do provide those employees with reflective vests to ensure high visibility. So, uh, anyways, uh, with that, I was thinking, uh, we would put the signage up and talk about, uh, crosswalks, sidewalks in our budget meeting, uh, in the spring.
Uh, I've got a question. Where does the speed limit change up there?
Up five bucks, correct?
Does it drop from?
Before that, doesn't it?
It goes to seventy-five bucks, I believe, and then it's fifty by just a quarter inch.
Just before, sorry, okay. They're now booting it through there when the workers are going back and forth to work. And maybe get speed limit dropped a bit. Two bucks.
I thought it was fifty right from before.
Get a change to fifty once you hit.
I think it's fifty sign just a quarter inch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy just.
On the way until.
Yeah, seventy from the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up down until you get, or just for the town sign somewhere, uh, and there's the hip hops.
Maybe get a.
It might be a good idea because Kent has a lot of employees there too that like walk to the grocery store and stuff. And then the Oxford Frozen Boots homes and you have a lot of walkers up there.
I'm looking.
Whole lot of people walk.
With speed limit.
Yeah.
We'd have to get permission from the traffic authority if we want.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, we can't just automatically jump it on our own.
No, it's, it's a bit of a process.
Yeah. Why don't you just put up the signs?
All right, we will look at that.
Okay.
I have a question that's about speeds. Um, how difficult is to put speed bumps?
You are the doctor?
No, actual speed bumps. Like, is it, is it expensive? Is it?
I, I don't know. Anybody have any idea?
It's not always a big problem.
Yes.
It's still adorable.
Hmm?
With your speed bumps, you would have an awful time while I'm around, would you not?
Sunset is having some major issues. Um, and that's the only thing that I could possibly think of is a speed bump, but I guess you're right. I should bring, they would disappear eventually after the cloud hit it enough time.
We have a police advisory board meeting tomorrow night. We can bring that up for Sunset.
Yeah.
Issue?
Yeah.
Uh, speed bumps and questions?
Do the speed, do the street as well.
Do the street.
Well, you can also add, uh, Jackson.
Yeah, all the streets.
Lower Main.
Yes, I mean, there, there's a lot of areas.
Yeah.
Um.
Anyway, that's why I was just thinking of that, but I didn't, so.
No.
So you can bring that up in, uh, Jason's body room?
I might just press play, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I will.
Anything else?
Uh, not on the sidewalks, no.
Okay. Where does she want the, if I may, where does she want the, uh, reflective signage for?
Uh, just going towards that way, just, uh, to be caution, um.
People walking?
People walking, yeah, pedestrians.
Up the highway.
Up on the highway.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, email from Juanita Spencer, CEO for NSFM Federation. Uh, we, EPR for printed paper, back to Linda, what's?
Okay, so we received an email, um, from Juanita Spencer from NSFM. Uh, she's pleased to advise the regulations regarding extended producer responsibility for printed paper packaging are now in place. Uh, this has been an advocacy priority for the membership since two thousand nineteen. So this is actually a huge step forward. Uh, we're going to be hearing a lot more in our future meetings here. But, uh, EPR programs, which again is the extended producer responsibility, makes producers accountable for end-of-life management of their goods, which improves recycling efforts and support waste reduction goals. The programs are a key part of the circular economy, which refers to retaining and recovering as much value as possible from resources by reusing, repairing, refurbishing, remanufacturing, repurposing or recycling products and materials. So this is actually, uh, it's, it's going forward and, um, yeah, so it's great for our economy. And just, uh, an update, uh, from NSFM. Does any more you want to add or does that sound?
No, just if you're wondering what it is, think the paint program now, right? You can't just throw out paint, there's a process.
Right.
And the people who create the paint are helping with that process. So now not just the paint, but now they have, uh, batteries, lamps, small household electronics, irons, can openers, hair dryers are going to create more, um, responsibility for the producers as opposed to us for getting rid of the garbage.
Right. Yeah, you made a question? Okay, uh, next, uh, accessibility plan, town of Oxford, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. They have Deputy Mayor Donald's name on it.
May I start with that and then I'll bring it over? If you don't, if you're okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, um, the committee has done a lot of work on this plan, accessibility plan. It is in draft form right now and we want to present it to council for their review and to approve at our next council meeting. And this is a five-year plan for the accessibility. This was a requirement from the province that all municipalities, uh, get this done. So we did send it out to the province, uh, for their review.
So, we did send it out to the province for their review of the draft. And so, they have reviewed it for the basic requirements aligned in the Accessibility Act. Those requirements for content and accessibility plans are: progress made removing and preventing barriers, how organization will prevent and remove barriers, and processes in place to assess the impact of proposed actions on accessibility. The last obligation is for plans to be made publicly available. And so, based on their review, the name was Andrew Jansen, was the person that did the review. They would say the draft plan met the above requirements. So, the, it's met with the province, and so, it's up to Oxford whether or not they would like to adopt this plan. So, great work with the committee, they stuck through and met right up till June and put this all together in a lot of talks, even, you know, after the meetings, a lot of working meetings. So, I'll let Deputy Mayor add anything if you like about the process.
As you said, they worked hard on this. They actually checked other counties, other places for this accessibility. This was passed by federal, twenty-seventeen?
Twenty-thirty, we have to be honest, that's the time. Yes.
But it was, it was twenty-seventeen, and they had a four-year plan for us to do that. So, with this committee stepping in at that stage of the game, I think they've done a fantastic job in research. I mean, it is up now to the town to look, look at it, and. Any questions? More welcome. I think we're having a meeting here.
Soon.
Soon. And we would like maybe some of the councillors, if you can find the time, just to pop in and.
Meet again, yes.
And we, has this been sent out to the council yet?
In the package.
Oh, it's in the package?
Yes. Actually, it's a separate, I don't think it's a lot of pages. It is on the website. So, if you go to the website under the committee, the whole package, this is on that.
Okay.
On that site as well, so the direct link to that package, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Anything else regarding that? Well, I would say that is everything for our panel meeting for this date. So, I will clear. Am I missing something?
The note.
Oh, the note, yes. Next town meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, not Monday, October the tenth, given the Thanksgiving holiday being held the day previous. So, our next town meeting will be October the tenth, Tuesday night. With that, I will clear this meeting adjourned, and we'll wait twenty seconds and start the.
I think you have two minutes, I would like to go over Washington.
You may have two minutes.
Better make that four.